Now, we're going to move on to item number seven, comment from council members. We have three items that for discussion. So what I'm suggesting we do is go ahead and we'll start with Councilmember Mason, then we'll go on to Vice Mayor Medina. Read the topic, allow that individual council member or vice mayor to articulate what the topic is, what your thoughts are. Maybe ask each of the colleague if they have a question, specific question on what was stated or needed some more clarity. And then everyone get one opportunity here back and then we can go ahead and then give our comments and or thoughts on that. Does that sound okay with everyone's just so we keep the momentum going for the meeting? Okay, no, I just saw, I thought you were Councilmember Mason talking. Okay, so everybody seems okay with that, so I'm going to begin on again, item seven, seven A. Councilmember Mason. Consideration of moving San Bruno towards a rotating mayor model through the upcoming gubernatorial special election to align with the neighboring nineteen peninsula cities. Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. The question around a rotational mayor was one of the first questions I received when running for city council in 2019. Being the only city in the peninsula without a rotating mayor, I supported the switch then and would say so as I got to know more San Bruno residents. In April of 2020, after the creation of a process for council members to create incentives and initiatives, both council member Marty Medina and I agendized this item but did not receive the majority support to move the initiative forward for the voters to make the decision. With the recent confirmation that there will be a recall vote on the ballot, there's another possibility to provide the opportunity to make this change to the voters. In San Bruno, we have an elected mayor that holds a two-year term, needs to run every two years to hold the seat and does not have a limitation on how many terms their office can be held. The reasons behind this potential change are as follows. Number one is equity. Although largely a symbolic role, the mayor is and by title provided opportunities that other council members are not provided. Does it matter that San Bruno has not had a female mayor invited to any regional mayoral events, mayoral listservs in over twenty years? Does it matter that when a woman did run for mayor, myself, she was asked by a fellow elected official why she ran without asking permission to run from the sitting mayor? For some, it may not matter, but for me, as an elected official who ran on the idea of change as the only female sitting council member, I think it does matter. By establishing a rotating mayor, we can ensure that those elected to office and more importantly, those San Bruno residents we all represent are represented on a rotating basis reflecting our constituency. It also alleviates the need for anyone of lesser economic means to worry about funding a campaign every other year, which is in and of itself a daunting task unless the position continuously runs unopposed, as we have seen in San Bruno. Two, districting and surrounding cities. As we look to the potential of districting, an elected mayor for a single district would have a two-year term. That means that the district would have representation to the tune of forty percent of every vote for a minimum of two years. A rotating mayor would offer a proportional opportunity for each district to have representation in the years ahead. This model already exists. We really are the only city in the peninsula without a rotating mayor. It's imperative that we offer our residents an opportunity to make this decision as our city continues to change and grow. We really do need proportional representation. Number four, potential revenue savings. Currently, the mayoral term is every two years and the city council term is every four years. What this means is that we have to have a mayoral election every two years placed on the ballot. We had previously been informed that every additional item on the ballot is an additional cost, but that these costs were not itemized. So it's important that we know prior to making a final decision what the cost is to the city to have a separate election for the mayor versus city council election. We had also been informed that a special election is significantly expensive, something to the tune of $250,000 to $500,000. So this here is not a special election that San Bruno would be hosting. There is a recall election that's being placed before the voters and it's something that we can add to as opposed to having an election specifically to determine whether we would like to switch to rotational mayor or not. So what would be the cost to adding to this existing recall election, this item? And then two, what is the savings to the city by not having a mayoral item separate from the city council item on the ballot every two years? And then five, a strategic initiative. At the time we had our initial strategic initiatives, a recall had not been confirmed. Since it is and since this topic has been raised by our own residents, the request at this time is that we really just understand the cost to place this item on the special election ballot, the timeline by which we need to make a decision. And once this is all understood, approved or not approved, then we either move forward with placing this item on the ballot or not. Lastly, it's important for me to note that this request is not a reflection of my opinion on our sitting mayor. It could be anyone sitting in the seat of mayor and this request would be the same. This is a policy decision that we should consider through the lens of policymakers, through the lens of city council members in one of twenty cities where this model appears to be working and for the benefit of our residents in San Bruno. With that said, we're free to have a discussion. I'm open to answering any questions, but the goal is, one, get the costs associated with placing this item on the recall ballot and then two, for staff to provide that information to council to make the determination whether to move forward. Thank you to my fellow council members for listening and for entertaining this topic.
Thank you, Councilmember Mason. Are there questions for Councilmember Mason? And what we'll do is we'll go through the colleagues here, then I'll open it up because we do have somebody from the public, so I want to make sure we have to give that opportunity too. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I'm willing to provide a comment.
Well, let's go to questions and then so we also get it from the public and then we'll circle back as we had agreed we kind of would and then have our comments. Okay, any other questions at this time? Okay. I think the only, and I don't know, my question might be, and I don't know, it's not fair to Councilmember Mason, but is there any estimate of, I'll give staff a moment as we go to the public, is to what it could be? So I know we had an estimate of $250,000 to $500,000 for if we were to do it solely, let's say it was just us in the county. So is it still to that or do we know, do we not know? And of course, the unknown is probably our other community is going to be adding on to this election because obviously the more you have, the cheaper it is. The less you have, then the city could bear all the cost. So with that, I see no questions at this time. Let's open it to members of the community and we do have a hand. City clerk?
Yes, Arus Harmon.
Hello again, Arus Harmon from six thirty-three second half. I don't have super strong feelings about this because we don't have a strong mayor system. We have a mayor that is sort of a first among equals, but you know, there are some duties that are allocated to that. I think as it seems quite likely that we are going to migrate to a districted or perhaps proportional system, given the California Voting Rights Act. I mean, I think there is something symbolically valuable in having the person that chairs the meetings, who has that mayoral role elected by the city as a whole. And so I sort of feel like that the fact that we may be moving towards a situation where the council members are elected not by the entire city, rather than saying, oh, at any given time you'd rotate through them, that is instead an argument for keeping an at-large mayor. I think it is a little odd to have the, you know, only one district at a time holding that role. So I hope that will be considered. Did you want to? All right, that's all.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
The next speaker just raised their hand, Claudia Quinn.
Good evening, council. We would like to say that in regards to this issue, we would like to have it put on the ballot and let the voters decide what they think about it. So we're very much for finding out how the voters feel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If there's any other speakers that I could ask at this time to please raise your hand. I see one speaker in to be called up and not seeing any other hands, so here's our last speaker on the top. Mr. Seymour, could you please bring him in?
Steven Seymour.
It's actually Sandra Perez-Vargas. I wanted to hear what Claudia said. It's, you know, a lot of things change and maybe a rotating the mayor might be a good change, who knows? But like Claudia said, let the voters decide. I think it's important to let the residents decide on this one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Oops, I muted myself. We're going to bring it back to city council and with any comments from colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I've got council member Hamilton and then Vice Mayor.
You can go first, it's fine. No, okay. I knew you wanted to go, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to say I am supportive of exploring this and of putting the idea before the voters. My, I have questions about what the cost would be, the same questions that were that Councilmember Mason put as part of her statement about what the cost would be both for adding to the recall ballot and what the ongoing potential savings would be about not having a mayoral election. But I also have a lot of questions about how it would work in conjunction with district elections. The, and that question, that second question, I think would be an easy one to answer considering that we have neighbors who also have district elections and as was stated, we are the only city on the peninsula that has an elected mayor. So I, you know, like ultimate supportive, it would be contingent on the answers to those questions, but I am in favor of moving forward to get those answers.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilwoman Mason mentioned, I expressed my support for this earlier. I believe a rotating mayor would be good for San Bruno. It isn't odd in San Bruno, or it's odd that we do have it, that there's one out of twenty cities, but San Bruno does its own thing. And this is something that the voters would get to decide. What we're figuring out is, at this point, for me, how much would it cost to do it in this election compared to how much would it cost to do it in the next election? For me, this isn't the highest priority. And however, without knowing the cost, which I think could be pretty simply obtained of contacting the county clerk to get some numbers so that we can make a decision, at this point, not knowing what that number is, I'm not going to be able to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other council members?
Just a few comments. I think I agree with a lot of the things I'm hearing across the board. You know, I don't have super strong feelings one way or the other about, you know, what is the best governance model? The one we have is work. I know that I've heard, you know, that the history of how we ended up here was because there was so much contention over selecting a mayor that it was finally decided, well, let the people pick directly. And so we are where we are. And as one of the speakers said, maybe enough time has gone by and opinions have changed. What's really interesting is that we are going to have to go through the districting process and that could have implications on how this all plays together. Pacifica, for example, just two years ago, they decided when they picked their districts that they would now elect a mayor. So they're going in the other direction. They're going to be electing their mayor, starting with their next election as part of that process. So they have four districts and an elected mayor, starting now, I believe with the next election. So, you know, I'm not sure if it makes more sense to go to the voters and make this decision prior to doing the districts, or would it make more sense to make this part of the districting discussion and then put it to the voters? Or is, do we want to decide our district issue first and then put this somewhere where we're not doing an off-year election and we get full participation? Off-year elections tend to not get the same amount of participation, so maybe that would be the time to look at this. I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, could potentially come back. I know a lot of people are interested in seeing fireworks voted on again. It's been a decade since that was decided by the voters and maybe opinions have changed on that and maybe we should be looking at those things as well. And so maybe we should allow enough time to look at all potential things that we would want to put out there and, you know, pretty much build out an entire ballot and put that on a ballot that hits, which coincides with the general election and is more likely to get broad participation from our voters. So again, you know, not necessarily opposed to the idea, but I just wonder what the best way to approach it is and if we tried to do this now. I don't think there's a date set for the election, but if it was going to be a November 2021 election, I don't think that would give us a big window this year to do a voter education and do the planning that we would have to do in order to get material available. And again, I don't think it would be fair to the voters to just kind of throw it out there and say, hey, what do you think, without giving them some information on what the pros and cons and letting them understand the larger landscape of what's going to be happening with districts and so forth. So those would be my concerns.
Okay, for myself, so, and I didn't know about Pacifica, I do believe Half Moon Bay, they are district.
I'm sorry, you're correct. I meant Half Moon Bay, not Pacifica.
Okay, because I was going, okay. So Half Moon Bay, yeah, they are district and are going to elect their mayor. I know Burlingame is coming up with that question now. So they just had a meeting that is like, okay, we're doing districting, how do we draw it and then do we do an elected mayor? So they're doing it all together as one. And I think it's important for folks to know too, it absolutely automatically has to go to the vote of the people. It is up to them, it is not up to us. This is not simply where we have that option to do that. And the history, so one thing that I think being on the council that I have enjoyed is that when it came to the mayor and the vice mayor, there was never a question. It's not political. It's been, it's decided on the mayor and it's decided on what the council agreed to, five oh, on how the vice mayor is selected. So as you know, there's times in our county that other cities have chosen by a three-two not to have somebody be the mayor or vice mayor or have that person serve twice in a row. And we've all read those, so we don't need to go into specific examples. That's the nice thing, that it doesn't become political at that time and then it's clear direction based on what's, the voters have decided in the municipal code. And it is, it is true. How we got here is a person who should have been, could have been rotated into mayor, it was, was not selected. And that's how it started, a voter initiative, because they said, hey, hold on. And so it went to the vote of the people. That gentleman who was over, who was bypassed for rotation became the first elected mayor. And in two years, he lost reelection. So that's the evolution of how it happened. Also, the reason for the every two years is because what the folks from the history I know is that they wanted three people up each two years so majority of the council could be changed and the direction of the city could change as well. Because then you'd have to wait four years for three members to come up. So that was their rationale back then as well for that. I don't know that there's an additional cost for the mayor being on every two years because you have two council members there. So unless somebody runs, then there's that, but you're always having that because you have two council members that are up each time. But I think it's also, I kind of share some of the sentiment of Councilmember Salazar is, how do you know when the right time is to do this? I believe it would be more costly in 219 than 220. I believe that the reason the state has mandated us to go into even years' elections was to get the largest voter turnout and have the best opportunity for democracy. And that's why even years has been done. I also, I believe we get the cost. It may be more than we think, I believe, but again, I don't truly know. I think I'd ask that question if staff does know of those costs. So let me pause there and see if there's any, any idea from staff.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. So staff does not know the cost to hold a city election tied to the gubernatorial recall election. The date for the recall election has not been set. They were looking at either late October or early November. Our city clerk has been in communication with other city clerks as well as the county. That date is currently not set. We hope to know that date sometime in June, which is if this item is supported tonight, we would hope to return to the city council by the second meeting in June if we know that date. But that date is critical because that date tells us the date that we would have to submit our local item to the county. And once that date is known, we will be able to ask and get a firm or a close to a firm number from the county on what the cost will be. Our city clerk has also talked to her counterpart city clerks in the county, just to get a sense, are there any other cities that may be looking at a local measure tied to the gubernatorial recall? We have heard back from fourteen of the twenty cities with only two saying maybe. And so there are two more people potentially where we are sort of looking at the potential for a gubernatorial recall election or the certainty of gubernatorial recall election, but waiting on that date to decide whether they would have a local item on the ballot. And as we know from prior elections, the number of local items actually decreases the cost for each individual agency. And so all of that is really hopefully going to play out over the next month or so. And should this item be supported, we have been noting the questions that the city council have asked, both with respect to elections, the cost of elections, as well as the district election process. And so we can bring back some information from the city council at that time.
What I was going to, thank you. What my final thing was, is I know it's about the district elections. You know, it's not to say we have to have five districts or four districts and an elected mayor. You could have seven districts. You don't know because we haven't had that discussion yet. We haven't looked at the census, we haven't seen all of that data. And so therefore, you know, are we, you know, is it, does it make more sense to have it all done at once so it can be before the people? Or do you do it in sections when we don't know the other answer to the districting yet because we haven't obviously yet discussed that yet? Anyway, those are my comments, but like Vice Mayor Medina kind of said, there's the unknown and I think for a lot of us, it's cost. If it's high, then I think, as we were in strategic initiatives last year, it was like, hey, you know, that's why Councilmember Mason pulled it off and was like, hey, that's way too much, so not at this time. So anyway, those are my comments. And I appreciate everybody with their comments. So Councilmember Mason has asked for this to come back with some of the detail. I think city manager kind of outlined it pretty good. And Vice Mayor Medina, did you, and Councilmember Hamilton, you were yes to bring it back with more data? Okay. And Vice Mayor Medina, are you okay to bring it back with additional data and information?
Yeah, we need, yes, Mr. Mayor, we need the cost. And until you ask, you don't know what it's going to be. And whenever they can give us a number, you know, ballpark would be helpful and then we go from there.
Okay, Councilmember Salazar?
As long as this request for information isn't going to impact any other deliverables that we've assigned to staff, I mean, that's always a concern, right? I don't know how big of an ask this is, so as long as staff is okay with bringing this back within the timeframe, which is also, you know, makes it difficult, but as long as we're not derailing any other efforts, I'm in favor of bringing back the information.
I would concur with Councilmember Salazar as far as, you know, you've got a month and so. And as we bring on other tasks, I just want us to keep in mind, we're asking, we had initiatives, but we're asking first up. So I think all of us are encouraged. It's almost hard to make a decision because you don't know the facts of the decision. And I know for me, costs are going to count. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to say, you know, but if you're talking $250,000 or some versus what it could cost going forward, but also I would like to have it quantified as far as what is the cost for having the mayor on every two years? Because you already have council elections. So I would like just that because it's been raised and I don't know how it could be more if, in essence, you're already having an election. So what you would be doing is having, if everybody was rotated, you would only be having three people every four years, but you still would be having it, so you just would miss a seat every two. And maybe a little bit of the history, I know you heard my version of what I've read, but it doesn't make me the historian either, so I think some of that would be helpful. So I think you have your direction from the council is to please ask the question, get the details, bring it back to the council. And you had said the second meeting in June and I think we will wait for the report. Did you need any more clarification, city mayor?
No, just no clarification. I do think it's important to know, as of late, there's been additional requests for the information that we would bring back. I am not sure that we will be able to do a detailed financial breakdown of the costs from past elections and how much of that was attributable to the mayor, mayoral election, as well as to bring back the full history on the city's mayoral processes. And so I do think that we can bring back high-level information that is necessary for the city council to understand the cost, know the date, know the time, know the deliverables, and we can bring back some information on our district elections process and the timing on that because we are currently working with the vendor and will be bringing forward a full schedule for that process. And so I do think that there's some valuable information that we can bring back, whether we can decouple all of those costs and bring you a, what I call completed staff work analysis on cost and history. We will certainly look into that and of course, attempt to meet council's objectives.
I appreciate that clarification and yeah, I wouldn't, you know, didn't expect the history lesson, so maybe I gave you that wrong impression. Okay, so staff, I apologize. Council has given directions to staff and I appreciate that. And I know Councilmember Mason has a second item as well.
Can I just really quickly, before we move on?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. I do think it's important when we look at the cost, I think that 2020 election was kind of an odd, I shouldn't say an odd election, but the turnout was significantly greater than I think in past years is what I've seen in the numbers. So I do think it's important to see maybe the last two elections, what the cost is for having these items on the ballot. So if we could just have that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to the next item. For Councilmember Mason, direct the Hart Committee to draft a resolution for city council approval affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the black community and condemn racism.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. This is another item that was originally proposed last year. In lieu of consensus on this item, the council created the Hart Committee. Since the creation of the Hart Committee, we have yet to review this original request. We have in a very short time period provided a resolution to stand in solidarity with the AAPI community, which I think we're all proud of. And at this time, one year later, on the anniversary of George Floyd's death, it's really important that we provide the same solidarity to the black community and condemn racism. Chair Salazar? Chair Salazar requested direction from the council recently for a charge to the Hart Committee. As the vice chair, I am now requesting that the council provide the Hart Committee the direction to move forward with this resolution and bring it back for council approval at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, my colleagues, questions? And if anybody in the community has any, they can raise their hand. Um, if not, comments from council. Uh, I don't mind starting, or I'm sorry. Is that all right, Tom? Okay. I know, I'm going out. I just thought I'll go first.
Hold the rules, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that you are, you know what, Ashley? Because I did state that at the beginning. So let's not off track, but let's stick to the plan. But Councilmember Hamilton?
Uh, I am absolutely supportive of this. The Hart Committee was formed out of this question and the end, this request and this request never was never addressed. And this is, this seems like a fairly easy thing for us to remedy and something that we do need to remedy. I'm absolutely supportive of this.
Thank you. There, Mr. Salazar, any?
No, I don't have any.
Question, okay, got. Uh, oh, I said, that's right, we're on comments because there were no questions. I apologize. We're moving faster than I realized. Uh, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I fully support this. And I look forward to it. Thank you.
And for myself, I'm fine with it as well. What I would ask, I know this is not the intent of the council member, but when it says direct Hart Committee, I'd like it to be more of a kind of an encouragement because I like it organic, right? To come from, from the Hart Committee. When we decided the purpose of it, there were four bullet points for the purpose which we all saw and we concurred to. One was to seek community input and the perception of racial and social equity within San Bruno. To build trust and strengthen partnerships among local community-based organization, public agencies, neighborhood groups, and religious organizations to explore and evaluate successful models and best practices for racial and social equity. Two more bullets. Develop and support the implementation of events to enhance the San Bruno Stands United Against Hate campaign. And finally, submit recommendations for action to the San Bruno City Council designated to reduce or eliminate racial and social inequities and help the city of San Bruno better serve its diverse community. I'd like to remind that this was the purpose of why it was formed. And this is what its purpose was. And so I think, again, it was to come from this group, sitting knowing. And it holds two members of the city council, two representatives from San Bruno Park School District, two representatives from Cappuccino High, two representatives from the business community, and two members from the general community. So I would like to see um that we go to what we had decided. I think what I do hear from folks at times is, okay, a resolution comes. We all feel we could probably, if it was on the agenda, we could vote on it right now. We'd be done. But at the same time, then what's the next step? Um, it's been a year, as Councilmember Mason said, so what has transpired in here? Because pieces of paper that get filed in the archives are not moving the ball forward in order to address what I think the purpose also is. So I'd like the committee, the Hart Committee, when they get back is to kind of go back to its original purpose too and maybe explore some of those other items that were, as we all concurred to what its purpose was. So I think a Hart Committee has their direction from council is bring them together. Oh, and Councilmember Mason, did you have any other items other than the ones listed? Just from comments from yourself?
Yeah, just some quick updates, just that I'm really, I just hope staff looks into state and federal assistance for individuals who are behind on their utility bills. The numbers are quite high and there's a number of services right now available. And hopefully we can prominently display those on our city website through our social media outlets. It helps us, we get paid back, and it really helps the residents to ensure that they have, that their needs are being met. Um, I also received a mailer from California Treasurer Fiona Ma and wanted to encourage individuals to open college savings opportunity accounts or also known as five twenty nine, five twenty nines. Apparently, and I apologize, but I have it right in front of me. They're a hundred percent tax-free growth towards the children's college education. But what I wanted to make sure I said right was that between May twenty fourth and May thirty first, there's a fifty dollar incentive for opening. So um, this is a mailer that I think we all got, but I wanted to share that. And then the last thing is that a lot of individuals may not know that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has recently allotted a significant amount of emergency housing vouchers to cities across the country and counties across the country. And San Mateo received two hundred and seventeen of these emergency housing vouchers. So I am hoping that we are somehow working. I'm not the contact for Life Moves. I'm not sure if the city is still meeting with them on a regular basis. But these have to be allotted very quickly. They have to be used quickly. And if Life Moves can connect some of our homeless residents in San Bruno to these emergency housing vouchers, we would stabilize their housing situations. And I think it's a, it's a pretty unique opportunity given where we are right now with COVID nineteen and with the opportunity. So I just want to really encourage staff to connect with the county and the housing authority of San Mateo to determine whether any of our homeless participants are eligible or on the referral basis to receive any of these emergency housing vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to item B under comments from council members. Vice Mayor Marty Medina, request to agendize a study session to discuss the creation of the Downtown Improvement Ad Hoc Committee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So yes, a few weeks ago, I first mentioned the formation of a Downtown Improvement Committee. And I'm following the process that we have of trying to agendize this topic. And why I wanted to have a study session about it is because I think it's important enough to hear from all of the council. I enjoyed working with Councilman Hamilton on the Clean San Bruno Subcommittee. And I believe we succeeded in bringing our recommendation to the council. So um, why have a Downtown Improvement Committee? Well, our council has been hearing from the public for years about what can we do to improve our downtown? And this council and in the, this council and the previous council in the previous couple of years have done a lot with staff, you know, providing the work of generating a downtown parking plan, downtown management parking plan in twenty nineteen, a street skate plan in twenty nineteen, updated the parking standards in twenty twenty. So um, recently in this, this year, we already with tonight approved for funding for activating Centennial Plaza. We're pursuing a grant for improving Posey Park. And council, at the last council meeting, approved the replacement of garbage cans. Uh, City Cruise, this past week, completed the parking improvements with the addition of green and white loading zones and parking zones to help move, move people safely to get into certain areas and to kind of encourage people to get their uh purchases completed and open up a spot for somebody else. So all along this, we know, I know, council is extremely busy. We know that our budget is tight and we're entering another budget cycle. So yet still, what more can we, what more can the council do to improve downtown? How do we address vacant storefronts? And how can we make those vacant storefronts look much better than they do now? I had the opportunity to walk with the mayor today. And a couple of those vacant storefronts are in the same condition for years. So this, this ad hoc committee would do some of the research in looking at what other cities are doing to improve the appearance of these vacant storefronts through their municipal code. Other questions? What can we do to welcome and attract new businesses? How do we improve the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce? How can we improve the communication and build relationships with our existing businesses? We need to build the trust. We need, we need to get the confidence that we are there to support them. What events can we have downtown? Can we have a car show? Can we have a festival? Can we have musical and art events? Where will the clean sweep, a neighborhood sale, uh, I don't think it was called a garage sale, but that we had in the park, was the clean sweep sale maybe? But um, what was it?
It was a flea market.
The flea market, okay. Didn't really want to call downtown a flea market, but okay. So what can we do? Can we do something like that? Can we do it in a parking lot? What does this council think that they can do? Even, even though staff's really busy? What can we do to encourage art? To work with the Culture and Arts Commission and let's get some art? As we activate the Centennial Park, that artwork likely is going to go away. And it's encouraging to know that we're going to do something about it and make it livelier there. So this Downtown Improvement Committee will review these questions and provide some recommendations to council to move it a little more forward. I spoke with um a San Bruno committee member here, and I won't try to pronounce his last name, but John, who has nuts for candy down in Burlingame, who has experience, vast experience with working and building a downtown. And Business Improvement District was something that we briefly touched on. But that, for me, is way down the road as we continue building upon the trust that we have in our community, in our business owners, to get the investors to take a bigger chance in San Bruno. So I'm asking my colleagues to agendize a study session so we can have these conversations in public. Thank you.
Okay, I just want, I'm just, I am going out of turn, but just for clarity because it says study session and then it says an ad hoc committee. So what I think, correct me, please. The ask is to have the full council in a study session in regards to downtown. Okay, just want to make sure that would be the first step.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, just want to make sure since it said bow. Okay, questions of Vice Mayor on what he has brought before? Councilmember Hamilton?
So um, so then my question would be, because I have, I have questions about what, specifically the remit of this committee would be, but it sounds like those questions would be brought up and discussed in the study session that you're asking for. Is that what, is that, is that fair, Mr. Vice Mayor?
That would be fair. I brought up a number of the questions here and in this, uh, these comments that we could look into. But perhaps maybe the council doesn't want to look into that and wants to limit it specifically to something else. I want to be really focused. I want to actually get something done here. I think we have a lot of great momentum going forward in our downtown, and I want to build upon that. And I know staff's really busy. And I understand that eventually whatever we're going to give them is going to take their time, but we have to be strategic and helpful and whatever we can do. I didn't mention, I forgot that um, to get people downtown is to have some additional events with either, I know the chamber did some wine events. And there was some great enthusiasm for that, of course. But then COVID hit and it just put everything like to a screeching halt in the whole world. So it, I look forward to it. I think it's really a promising time that we can continue building on, on, on improving our downtown.
Okay, other questions from colleagues? Questions, not comments. Councilmember Salazar?
And so my question would be just, if we're talking study sessions specifically, and Vice Mayor, I like the enthusiasm that's coming around. You know, the effort and the ideas that you're throwing out there. I think there's, there's a lot of potential there. So I'm really thinking that, you know, having a working subcommittee could be a real asset and something that could help build the momentum. But just in terms of scheduling a study session, so study sessions have historically been staff reports on topics of, you know, that require a lot of information. And so if we're talking a study session, I mean, it almost sounds like we're talking more brainstorming than study session where there really wouldn't be a staff report. Staff's not going to bring anything back for us to review and understand and learn and all that. So maybe just a suggestion, maybe we can just bring this back as an agenda discussion for the council to prioritize some items and then take the action to create the subcommittee from there. Because I don't think we really need a lot of prepared stuff. It just, let's agendize a brainstorming session as part of one of our regular meetings or as a special meeting.
That, absolutely fine with that. For lack of coming up with a better term, the thing that we're used to, either having a study session on something from the council or having, what else can we call it, right? So but having that open discussion where it's agendized so we can freely talk about it and we can share with our community of what our vision is and how we could, as a council, and I think we're already proven that we're working together to get the stuff done. So um, yes, we can call it a brainstorming session, that's fine too.
Okay, seeing no other hands up, my question would be, and I know it's new, but you know, even when we, you used to have the farmer's market, right? And so that was done. And now in retrospect, with Sunday, not a good day to do that is a Saturday, but then there's the competition. So I think, you know, for this brainstorming, I think is probably best. Because what I, what I would think, and I'm going to clarify because of what Councilmember Salazar said, is that staff wouldn't need to prepare. They wouldn't need to organize. They, I can also see on the other side of it going, oh, my gosh. Blank canvas and everybody take a brush and start painting. And God knows where we're going to end up. And then the would be, what can we do? And I think what I heard from you, which I liked, was hey, let's narrow the scope. Let's accomplish some things and not put forty things on downtown because we know it won't happen. We just know. But what can we do? And maybe the councils, because it may take finances. You know, where's the money coming from? Or maybe as the chamber is the one who led the charge on the farmer's market, was at the mall before. You, we talked about the wine tasting, you're correct. And there was the Bay Hill Champagne that used to be on San Bruno Avenue for years. That was, that was Cars, Mary Costa organized that because of the Cars and what have you. And so that added some activity. I think the other objective is it's about improvement. But I think improvement, if I'm hearing you correct too, is activities to bring folks down. I know we talked and briefly, you know, we've got the Fourth of July Pee Wee Tournament. Do we quit, but do we have that opportunity to bring those folks from outside of town to come down to have a meal or do whatever they need to do? So take those opportunities as well. So, but I think I've heard that. And Councilmember Mason has your head.
Yeah, sorry. I was looking for the new, the priority initiatives that we had. So what if we narrowed down to what we have on the initiatives? So for example, you know, there's Clean San Bruno. How does that, what does that look like in our downtown, right? We have the Small Attraction Program. What would that, what would that mean for the downtown businesses? We have the Summer Saturdays or Sundays for street closures. Could that be a car show? Could that be the, you know, the tree lighting? Could that be, I don't know what day the tree lighting would fall on this year. But those are three I'm looking at right now. And so I wonder if we can maybe further define what we have and then we can make them achievable for this year. And I would support that initiative so that we're not, we're not going outside of the bounds. And maybe hopefully just assisting staff a little bit by narrowing down the instruction. instruction. So I don't know if that helps, but I was just thinking that as I looked at our strategic initiatives for this year.
Okay, thank you. And don't think, I knew the hand just went up, but City Manager, I certainly was not going to leave you off the list, we want to include you for your thoughts and comments.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Medina. You know, just a few offhand comments. Certainly, should the city council desire to have a study session to talk about downtown, we can agendize that. I think the first thing that comes to mind is, well, of course, there's a desire both on staff and on council to take a dedicated focus and look at areas where we can make improvements downtown, those that have already been directed to staff or other. It's important to note that in June, council will be really busy with everything related to budget. And so we're even in looking at the conversations that we know you will have around budget that we don't typically have, like ARA funding and City Net, we might be looking for additional special meetings in June. And so sort of looking at what's before you as well as regular business, I really don't see your ability to have this study session in June, and so we're probably talking July. And then I think there are other initiatives that are really getting ready to kick off that I want to make sure that both staff and council have enough time to talk about and move forward. And while I totally understand the sentiment of let's agendize a brainstorming session and no work needs to be done with staff, I've been doing this long enough to know that tons of staff prep is needed every time the city council gets together to talk about a conversation, because there will be questions about, well, maybe the subcommittee can do this, but what do we do, what do we do about that now? Right? And how does staff interface with the chamber? And what would it take to have a municipal code change to address X? There's going to need to be some coalescing of staff that support a number of the things that Councilmember Medina mentioned. In addition, I think it's important to point out that the city council has already developed and adopted a set of strategic initiatives for the city council to work on, many of which relate to downtown. And a little bit of what I hear is, well, maybe council can take on some of those. But without looking at the list, but all of those that you directed to staff really require staff time and staff input to really work on and bring before you. And so if the direction of the committee is to look at sort of how to do those faster or prioritize them, I think there's a little staff analysis that's going to be needed, because what we said when you adopted your strategic initiatives is, one, we were going to see how many we could afford to fund that requires funding in the proposed budget that you're going to get and act on for next fiscal year. And then we would also return to you with a schedule, because all of those initiatives that you adopted, staff doesn't have time to work on immediately, and some of them, as we mentioned, won't even begin for six months. And so I think it's important that we be allowed to do that work, so there's not a sort of front-loading of something that you've already directed staff, and now we then need to readjust the things that you've already addressed staff to do. So in summary, if council directs it, absolutely, we will support it. The recommendation is to look to have it sometime in July, and certainly, staff will do a little preparation based on the items that have been mentioned tonight, just so we're prepared and the right people are there, and we've had some initial conversations around the work that's already planned and already ongoing related to downtown.
Me unmute myself. Thank you, City Manager, because I think that's important, and I think, you know, we need to be realistic, we need to understand time, staff's time and timeline, because obviously, the budget is a priority in June with some of the other council objectives that we have, and staff needs to keep us on track with getting that done. So what I've heard from council is that, yes, on a study session, City Manager has told us, you know, realistically, July, probably be the earliest after the budget's been approved, and that's behind department heads. I've also heard from council is that, let's, like Councilmember Mason said, hey, there's some items already there, and maybe they're already in the pipeline, and they're already scheduled out, and, but let's be realistic with what we're trying to achieve and look at potential things to add, a good environment that maybe brings folks to the downtown as well as do what we can with staff situation. They grasp that okay, folks? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, with the big study session happening in July. The appointment of the members of the subcommittee, my intent would be hoping that, it's quite different when you talk to somebody saying that you're on the subcommittee than you're just the one council member, and that you are proceeding with, with trying to accomplish these things, right? Perhaps this is a city attorney question, do we have to wait to have this session to appoint the committee members, or could we appoint them now?
City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. You cannot appoint committee members now unless that was specifically agendized, there's a relatively recent case that says that, so you'd have to.
That's fine, okay. Thought I'd ask.
Okay, appreciate the clarity, City Attorney. Vice Mayor Medina, anything, any other comments for this evening?
I do have one, one last comment announcement. Thursday at Bel Air School, the Second Harvest Food Distribution, people have been lining up before 2:00, and the line gets pretty long. We generally get through close to 200 vehicles, or 180 vehicles and 20 walk-ups. So Thursday, Bel Air, it starts at 2:00.
Thank you.
You need to, you show up, you can register right there on the spot.
Other? Thank you. Other comments from my colleagues? First, Councilmember Salazar, then we'll go to Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know we mentioned this at the beginning, but I think it's important enough to reiterate, COVID-19 vaccines are available and they're important. I got mine, I'm fully vaccinated as of last Thursday. So I also wanted to make a plug, our partners over at Cappuccino High School, wanted to get the word out that they're hosting their clinic on Wednesday, June 2nd. So they have the Pfizer vaccine, they're doing kids 12 years and up, adults as well, and for people that are already fully vaccinated, they also need volunteers for that day to help with the process. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. Councilmember Hamilton?
Okay, just, I have one item quickly. Earlier this year, Councilmember Salazar and I held a virtual town hall for residents. It was very well attended, and in my opinion, was a really good opportunity for residents to engage with council in a more direct way to discuss city issues and raise questions. I'm hopeful that you, my colleagues, can commit to teaming up to hold additional town halls on a regular and ongoing basis, perhaps quarterly, which would mean the next one would start getting scheduled sometime soon. I would suggest that we rotate members and commit to at least try, to at least try to go through all the available pairings of us before we repeat any pairings. I know we can't discuss this because this is not agendized, but I wanted to plant the seed with you, with you, my colleagues, tonight. I intend to request this to be agendized for council comments, so we can discuss it in our next meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar, on the vaccine at Cappuccino. It's June 2nd, and the second one would be on June 23rd, and yes, they are looking for help at Sid Mills and et cetera, but thank you for bringing that up. For myself, I wanted to say I had a, well, we call it now an all-hands meeting agenda, and this is for the county, believe it or not, it's been a year serving on that, and this is where, you know, we get the vaccination updates, emergency rental assistance, workforce recovery, small business recovery, education and digital equity and childcare. These are subsets of these bodies that a lot of us were asked to join, and then we have now an all-hands. And I won't ramble all the numbers, but looking at the presentation on what the county slash municipality towns have done and the outreach that has been had in all kinds of areas, it's been rather impressive, and is a testament to, you know, what we've been doing thus far, and the nonprofits that have been helped, the meals that have been provided, et cetera. So it was encouraging, because I think for the first time in the year, or the more than year we've been meeting, it's, everybody's feeling a little more optimistic, and everybody's feeling a little more hopeful, and everybody's seeing a light somewhere. But as was mentioned, June 15th is still not here, and we need to keep on the right track, do the right thing in order to ensure that we keep moving forward and don't take a pause, move backward. Also, I want to, and I've just got to say, show that we're getting some normalcy back, is that I want to wish the class of 2021 at Cappuccino High School, this Thursday, will be having an in-person graduation with precautions and modifications. Last year, obviously, was virtual, so I'm sure the class, though, have not been to class, to be together and have that experience, I think, is something we can be happy for and know that, again, we're moving in the right direction. So have the graduation to them. With that said, I will go ahead, and then we will adjourn this meeting, this evening, to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on June 8th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Everybody, enjoy the rest of your week. Be safe.